Now we're off, there we go. All right, we'll call the meeting to order of the Planning Commission October 24th. Roll call.
Attendance noted.
Excellent. Then we'll do the approval of minutes for the regular Planning Commission meeting of September 26, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to address the commission? All right, moving on. Item number one, consider an ordinance amendment, conditional use permit amendment and variances to allow an animal kennel business with an outdoor relief and exercise area at 6244 Cedar Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. In April 2015, the City Council approved a conditional use permit and variances to allow an auto repair business, Mako, at 6244 Cedar Avenue. Mako currently occupies the southern half of the property and has now made the northern half of the property available to another commercial tenant. Adago Pet Hotels is proposing to open an animal kennel business in the northern half of the building, along with an outdoor animal relief and exercise area on the east side of the building. Animal kennels are a permitted use in the C2 General Business District. In 2009, the City Council approved an ordinance establishing outdoor animal relief areas as a conditional use when constructed as an accessory to an animal kennel business. The necessary conditions for permitting an outdoor animal relief area include setback and screening requirements and regulations related to supervision and maintenance. One of those conditions states that the outdoor relief area shall not be used as an outdoor kennel, animal run, animal play area, or any other use not specifically identified in the conditional use permit. The applicant has applied for an ordinance amendment requesting a modification to those regulations, allowing the outdoor relief area to also function as an animal play area. The applicant is also requesting two variances related to setback and parking requirements. So just to repeat, in the C2 zoning district, animal kennels are permitted use. Only the outdoor relief area component is what requires the conditional use permit. So what you're reviewing tonight is the CUP and the ordinance amendment for the outdoor area, and then one of the parking variants would be necessary for the business to operate. But everything else is kind of exclusively dealing with the outdoor area. So looking at the ordinance amendment, in the report, you'll see there are three different subsections of that ordinance that we're looking to make changes to. The first in Section B was just a simple housekeeping change to fix a missing word that we found. The missing, the word "area" was missing from that one. In Section C, we're just adding a clarification to say that the outdoor relief area shall be screened from neighboring properties in a manner consistent with the surrounding area, just to better clarify how those areas should be screened. And then the big one in Section F, that's that the outdoor relief area shall not be used as an outdoor kennel, animal run, animal play area, or any other use. We're recommending to add the clause if the outdoor area is located less than 600 feet from any residential parcel. The intent of that regulation was to allow the minimum necessary outdoor relief area for an animal kennel business to be viable without allowing those other outdoor activities due to the potential nuisance to nearby residential properties. This site is very uniquely situated in Richfield, located on the dead-end portion of Cedar Avenue, north of Cedar Point Commons. The proposed location of the outdoor area is more than 600 feet, which is approximately one city block, from any existing or potential residential development. For that reason, staff finds that use to be reasonable in this location. We'll get into the variances. So the requesting a variance to reduce the required setback for the outdoor area from 25 feet down to 10 feet along the eastern property line or along Cedar Avenue. The code doesn't specify setbacks for the outdoor area itself, only that the outdoor area is supposed to observe the same setbacks as the building, which in this case is 25 feet since it's a street corner side of the property. The intent of that regulation is to protect neighbors from potential, from possible nuisance created by the outdoor area. This property has no neighbors to the east, and it's directly adjacent to Cedar Avenue and Trunk Highway 77. The applicant is also requesting a variance to reduce the off-street parking requirement. The zoning code doesn't specify a requirement, a parking requirement for animal kennels specifically. In the past, for these type of businesses and doggy daycares, staff has substituted the requirement for human daycare centers, which is one per five enrolled persons based on licensed capacity. The requested maximum capacity of 200 dogs would require 40 parking stalls. After adding a required dumpster enclosure to the property, the northern parking lot there will have 36 stalls, leaving a deficit of four stalls. The property is located on the dead-end portion of Cedar Avenue, north of Home Depot there, with Mako occupying the southern half of the building. There are no other properties along this portion of Cedar Avenue. On-street parking is allowed on Cedar Avenue in the event that there's a parking shortage. If overflow parking were to occur, the impacts would be limited to this property alone, as it has no other neighbors to compete for that on-street parking. Furthermore, the applicant states that the anticipated daily average capacity would be about 100 dogs. The plans show 128 kennels plus doggy daycare and grooming rooms. The maximum capacity of 200 dogs would be an absolute peak scenario such as on Christmas Day and other major holiday weekends. A full discussion of all the CUP stipulations, the general conditional use permit requirements, and additional information related to the variances and the required findings can all be found in the attachment to this report. And staff is recommending approval of the requested ordinance amendment with that stipulation that the outdoor areas be located at least 600 feet from residential property. That buffer distance, we believe, will mitigate the adverse effects that the ordinance was intended to prevent. And then staff is also recommending approval of the conditional use permit and the variances. That concludes the staff report. I know the property owners are here. I don't see the applicant here, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question. You know, I don't get over in that, and I didn't get over there to look at that before the meeting tonight. That dark area on the other side of Cedar, I know that's not the entrance ramp from Cedar. Is that just, what is that, just shrubbery or what is that? Oh, I'm not seeing the picture.
Google Maps view.
Okay.
That, so if you're looking at the satellite image...
Yeah, I'm looking at the satellite.
Between, basically between old Cedar Avenue and Highway 77.
Yeah.
It's like there's a big stormwater retention pond.
Oh, that is water there.
So it just shows up, yeah, really dark on the map.
Okay, so then the dog, where the dogs are going to be in their play area is just going to be facing the freeway then, so.
Right, yeah.
And so the building then would be blocking, I mean, anything, anyway. Okay, yeah, I got it.
Go ahead.
So Matt, this is more of a process question than anything. The, is it couched as an ordinance amendment because it has to do with the actual use of the property? Because there's really only probably one parcel in the whole city that would be within 600 feet of anything, and that's if they changed Motel 6 to a doggy daycare.
That's largely correct. The, by state, state law prohibits what's known as a use variance from, a variance for a use that is not identified in the code. So that's why this is presented as an ordinance amendment rather than as a variance to the existing, yeah. And staff has done an analysis of possible sites within the city that would be more than 600 feet from existing and potential, or potential residential property, and there are limited opportunities kind of in the, basically around the perimeter of the community.
Sure. And the variance for parking, even though there isn't a code requirement, we're still doing it as a variance?
That's right. Basically, we're going off the precedent that staff has used in the past for similar businesses, that we have just substituted the daycare center requirement.
Sure.
So we're just looking for, that's the requirement we're using to calculate their parking needs and presenting this as a variance from that.
Go ahead.
So my questions, I was just reviewing what happened in 2015 when we approved the Mako thing, and one of the things in that was that there was a variance granted for a fence on the assumption that the functional front of the building was facing old Cedar Avenue, and that was why a fence was approved for the southern site. So first off, I'm just a little bit irrelevant, but I'm curious what happened with the fence because I don't think there is one currently. I thought that was actually part of the approval, is that their vehicle area was required to be screened. And then second, is it okay that we called it the front of the building then and now it's the side of the building, like depending on which tenant we're talking about?
So the, on the, there is, on the south side of the building facing 63rd Street, there is a small fenced-in area.
Okay.
Where there's a, like a damaged vehicle drop-off area. And at the time, in the 2015 staff report, you could see in that one as well that we identified 63rd Street as the front of the lot. Whether or not it's the front of the building, doesn't really, the lot dimensions determine the front. So in this case, for a corner lot, the shorter of two sides, so the zoning code would say that the front of this property faces 63rd Street. So that's why the outdoor area is on the side of the property.
Well, I mean, I understand that that's the baseline, but my understanding is that we did a variance, looking at it and realizing that functionally the front is facing old Cedar, which is true from looking at the building. I mean, you can see that that is the front face of the building. So I mean, I don't feel super strongly about it. I do think it's just a little bit important to consider that although nobody lives across the street, it is sort of a gateway to the city. I think Cedar Point Commons even has a pretty prominent sign in that area. And I'm not, I don't have huge aesthetic concerns about the dog play area, but I don't think it's completely insignificant to consider that the freeway is there, and a lot of people see the first thing in Richfield when they come that way.
Right, and that is why we added, and why staff is recommending the change to the section about screening, just specifying that that be compatible, both looking at this property and any future potential ones. And what's being proposed here is a Cedar, haha, Cedar, Cedar fence, that, you know, it will be residential in character and should be compatible with both, with this property and would present a nice view from the highway as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm familiar with their Hopkins location. How do we, I know maybe the building owners may not know, but how does this outdoor play area compare to that in look and feel? And that building has very large, garish graphics. Is, will be similar, do we know? Yes, bright orange, bright green? Yes, sorry. Thank you. Can you state your name?
I am, I'm Carrie Kaufman.
Thank you.
And Mark Kaufman is here as well, we're the owners of Mako. Adago has proposed on the Cedar fencing to put their traditional branding of the green and the orange and the dog figures, the dog silhouette figures.
Okay.
And then on the monument sign on that side as well, continued branding in that same color scheme, as well as on the north side of the building now, which I guess would be considered by the definition that's being proposed, the back end of the building. They'll have a new entrance there and additional branding there in the same color scheme as their other properties.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question about parking. Do you know if they plan to have any shuttle service to the airport? So will there be overnight parking?
I don't know what's officially in their proposal, but that discussion has been had. That is a service that they hope to offer.
Sure.
What portion of that business, we cannot possibly say, but I know that that is potentially in their service offerings.
Okay, thank you.
And then I would just add to that, if that was a component to their business, that parking would have to happen onsite. They would not be able to accommodate that on the street.
On the street, okay.
City, existing city ordinance prohibits on-street parking for more than 48 hours.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
My only question is about the large amount of dogs in that area, and what, do we have anything in place that stipulates the cleanliness or cleanliness, the cleanup, et cetera, of that particular area? I mean, the other ones we've had have been pretty small, and we haven't had to really deal with too much of that, but this one, you're talking 100 dogs. And it seems to me that some stipulation should be in there to make sure that we have that particular need, because I don't want Mako having to put up with a smell that might run their patrons off.
Yes, so one of the existing conditions in the CUP is that it, that the outdoor area be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition at all times, and it also says that solid waste material shall be removed a minimum of once per day and disposed of in a sanitary manner. Adago indicated to us that they, that they pick up solid waste immediately, it's double-bagged and put in a receptacle, and then the outdoor areas are also, at the end of every day, the outdoor areas are sprayed down. So they were, they were looking at, for, for the outdoor area, the ground was a product called canine grass, it's like a synthetic turf over a limestone bed. I forget how deep the limestone bed is, but that kind of takes care of the filtration before it hits the ground, or before it, you know, seeps into the groundwater. And also, the Public Works Department has reviewed those plans and did not express any concerns with what was being proposed.
Okay, if there are no further questions, this is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come up and speak? No, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So there should be two separate motions here. One, first, to amend the zoning code, and then secondly, the conditional use permit and variances.
Oh my, I will move to recommend approval of a zoning code text amendment modifying regulations related to outdoor animal relief areas.
Second?
Discussion.
I just want to say that I'm familiar with Adago. I do know several people that have taken their dog to one of the other two places that they have, and totally satisfactory. And what they say about cleanliness and treatment of the dogs are exemplary, so I think it'd be a good addition to Richfield to have, you know, a business like this. It's a good local business.
As I say, I agree, we've used them many times, and they've been fantastic.
Okay.
And their outdoor play area is spotless, and inside is spotless, and the grass that you're talking about is something they talk about often as well, so.
I just think taking care of 100 dogs, it just boggles my mind, but they are at it.
And when you drive up, you know, you can't necessarily, I think the dogs have a lot of fun and aren't real loud, you know, I've never heard, so.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. Anybody else, discussion? All right, there's a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposed. Approved. Is there a motion for the second part?
I will move approval of a conditional use permit amendment and variances to allow an animal kennel business with an accessory outdoor relief area at 6244 Cedar Avenue South.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number two is to cancel the public hearing regarding a site plan approval to allow conversion of a building at 1415 East 66th Street. So do we have to make a motion, or is it just canceled?
You do have to move to cancel the public hearing. So the property owner withdrew the application, and because notice of the hearing was published, the Planning Commission must make a motion to cancel the public hearing. Thank you.
I move, we cancel the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, is there any new business? Old business, none? Liaison reports then, community services.
Okay, let's see. They had put together a geocaching policy for the parks, because there's been some, people have been interested still in geocaching. They thought it was time to have a policy on it so that everything was taken care of, and we knew who was in the parks type deal. So that was one thing. There was an update by Public Works as far as the, by Mr. Link, as far as projects that he'd been working on. One of them in particular that was brought to attention was a temporary or kind of a trial area along 69th area, or 69th Street from Xerxes to Penn, where they put in a new striping and a bike lane in both directions on that route. So that's kind of a trial and error type thing to see how it goes. Pretty inexpensive, so they wanted to see what happens with that. And they talked about the band shell, that they had completed the sound study, that went to the council last meeting, and just little bits about that as far as that they had, now had some good information that they could use as far as the sound that comes out of the band shell, so that it would not interfere with the neighborhood's regular living conditions and so on. So that's in place, and I think they also approved then the contract manager for that, for that study. I think that was about it.
Has there been any further discussion about dog parks? I know that...
About the what?
Dog parks.
Okay, yeah, good question. There, you know, as you know, the new comp plan is coming up, and as part of that, there will be some discussion in that new parks plan that they're going to put together, that, and one of the things was the, was a dog park, so that's going to be included in there in all those discussions when they put that plan together next year.
Great, thank you. City Council?
Just to further expand what Rick said, the City Council did approve the band shell project pending the bids that are going to be coming in in the spring, but the financing from the band shells task force is in place, and so it'll just be a matter of waiting for the bids to come in, so we can see what that's like. The other thing I just want to remind everybody is to vote. That's coming up on November 8th, and it's a very important election, so everybody get out there and do their thing.
I'll expand upon that. If anybody is wanting to be an election judge, there's still time to be training. Training's on Thursday, one last training before, so if anybody's available, you should come. HRA, I have no report, but I did want to talk about, I am presenting to the City Council tomorrow our kind of annual meeting, and so just kind of going through the public hearings that we've had, so I just kind of wanted to talk through everyone, see if you guys have anything you want to add, but an expansion of existing businesses such as Mother Duck, Minnesota Life College, and Fraser. New businesses, new locations such as HCMC, the Fitness Studio in Penn, and now Adago. Assisted living facilities, we've done lots of fences, it seems like, the past year. Beekeeping, lots of things regarding Lindell Gardens, shoreline improvements, parking and performance spaces. Couple things regarding the Cedar Corridor, and always talking about parking, and the band shell. And then just kind of want to talk about what we can do better as a commission as well, so I think more involvement from the public, so it's always nice to see people here and have them come. And so how do we get people more involved and kind of coming to further the discussion more? So posting on Facebook of the agenda kind of right when it happens, I think is really good, so people know it's coming. I've talked to John a little bit about bilingual postcard notices, so, you know, it says like for, you know, in Spanish, call this number, but is there a way that we can do that? That was definitely feedback we heard from people. And then just more broad sharing of meeting practices and expectations. I think these meetings can be kind of daunting to people who don't know and, you know, want to come speak, so when people do come, how do we kind of talk about, here's the process and here's how it works? And then just making sure we have diverse viewpoints and robust discussion and debate amongst all of us, too. I think, you know, when we have more discussion, the better and more involvement, so. Anything else, anybody wants to add? Yeah, Sean?
No, I just want to second what you said about trying to get more people involved, because I think that is really important. And I do want to say just, I really appreciate your effort that you've made as a chair to always make sure to ask about discussion before something happens, because sometimes that gets glossed over in certain commissions, and then you, you know, you don't get the full discussion among the commissioners. And obviously, it's even more important to get discussion from the public, but since the public isn't always here, it's important that we at least all get to say our piece, so I really do appreciate that. And yeah, I think all of your ideas are great for trying to get people involved.
Do people know what the comprehensive plan is all about?
I doubt it.
Yeah, I mean, that would be something to maybe publicize and engage people in. You know, I wonder, I really wonder what people understand about that whole process, and how the citizenry can really get involved in that, and how they can contribute to the next comprehensive plan.
That's a really good point.
Good point.
Thank you. Staff, do you have anything to add?
No.
No? All right. I have no HRA, so, Rachel's school board, Dan's gone, but does anybody else have anything? School board? Transportation Commission?
So unfortunately, I missed the last meeting, but I do have some just info from conversations with Jack. Well, obviously, Portland Avenue is completely open again. I hope you guys have all been down the whole length of it. It looks, looks great now with the striping in and everything. The other thing was, yeah, Rick already mentioned the 69th Street project, but I think this is a really important experiment, because the city sort of priced out a few different options. It would have been great to put a sidewalk on the street, but it also would have cost half a million dollars, so this is an option that's like less than one-tenth of that cost to do this. So I think they're experimenting it for 69th, but if it goes well, I think there are other streets that they could look at doing, like they talked about 64th between Portland and Niklet that's quite busy, that doesn't have a sidewalk as well. So yeah, I think that's a really cool project. The other thing is that the bike master plan, they're looking at sort of simplifying and refining that, because right now it has all these alternative routes, and it's not really clear to people where exactly they should expect bike routes, they live on those streets, if they're going to get a bikeway or not, so to try to simplify it to actual specific recommendations of how we want our network to build out. So that's all.
Perfect. And I would say, construction on 66th has started, and they're doing gas line right now, so that's why all the cones are running down 66th Street. So we got lots of notifications there. Yes, for the next couple of years, right? Chamber of Commerce?
Your report?
Excellent. Anything else, any other? No? All right. City Planner's report?
Sure, I just want to call out to our AV person, if he is listening, that staff pressed the wrong button. And now the screen is black, so maybe you could help us out? Moving on. There we go, yay! Thank you. I did want to remind you, you should have gotten a survey forwarded from Matt by the Human Rights Commission, and if you have not had a chance to fill that out and send it in, they would appreciate your feedback. I think we can probably print off some extra copies here, if you'd rather do it tonight, if you want to do that after the meeting. Other than that, our RFP went out for the comprehensive plan. We received five proposals. Staff is going over those right now. We'll be scheduling interviews here in the next week or two, and then there is a joint study session between the Planning Commission and City Council in mid-November, right after the election. So we'll talk about staff's recommendation and kicking that off. I do want to follow up a little bit on Commissioner Stamps' comments about the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is something that, for those who are listening, comes around every 10 years, and we update this. This is the city's long-term vision for our future. This year, this update is due at the end of 2018, December 31st of 2018. It's a, this is a massive undertaking by the city, by every city in the metropolitan area that's required to do this. It requires a lot of staff time, a lot of help, and a lot of community participation. When these things come up, we do our best to explain this long-term vision to the community and explain how important it is for people to get involved. This is really the time when we set policy. This is the time when you can make the biggest difference in your community. This is when it matters most. That is a difficult message to convey when the project is fairly abstract. You know, this time we're looking at Richfield 2040, you know, so imagining that. This time, I think we're really going to try to get to the importance of that by engaging students. get to the importance of that by engaging students, by making sure that, um, our young parents in the community understand that this is what Richfield's going to be when your children grow up. What do you want for them? And, and, um, try to get folks involved in that way. Also, we're going to do a lot with social media this time. Um, we're doing everything we can to get participation, so. Uh, just a little bit of an answer there, and we, we are rolling these things out. Um, but it is an abstract project and it, it's difficult, so.
The social media plan, so I'm curious, because you had a more fully featured, um, online engagement system with some, some third party, and that was shut down, and now there's sort of this makeshift, like you can submit a form and I think an email somebody or something. It, is that what's going to be used for the comprehensive plan? Or is it going back to more of a fully featured one where people can see each other's and interact with each other's ideas?
We'll tag team on this. I'll let Matt take the first.
Uh, first to your comments about, um, what was called Richfield Connect before, that we had a, we, uh, the city previously had a two-year contract with a company called Mind Mixer. Um, they changed, uh, sort of near the end of that contract, they dramatically changed the product. Um, and the city opted not to renew the contract with them. So we took it in-house, we tried to use, um, the built-in tools that our website vendor, uh, provided. But as you noted, it's kind of one-sided, it was lack, it's lacking, um, it allows for simple polling and question asking, but it, it's really lacking that back and forth interactive element that I think people liked about Mind Mixer and that they like about, about Facebook communication and things like that. Um, we've just gotten, we've just signed on, uh, to take part in a, a beta by, uh, uh, of a new, um, online engagement from, from the website vendor. Um, which I guess I, I've heard, uh, good reviews from, coming from our executive department, uh, that, that, that they're really excited about it. We haven't, uh, we haven't seen it, I haven't seen it yet. But, um, that will be rolling out soon, uh, so we're looking forward to it. And, um, the word is that that has a lot of the, the, the things that people really liked about Mind Mixer that allows that, um, back and forth, interactive, um, kind of, uh, yeah, two-way communication.
Okay.
So we'll look, look to that, um, for, yeah, for question, uh, for topics that will be coming soon on the same, the same, uh, website link that, uh, you were able to use before, the cityofrichfield.org/connect.
And will this be able to be tested out on something more minor before the comprehensive plan? Or will the comprehensive plan be the first?
Uh, yes, I was told there, uh, several departments have a bunch of questions that they, that they have ready to roll out as soon as this, uh, as soon as this takes flight.
Alright, sounds very good, thank you.
I did also want to know that one of the components of that RFP was that we are really looking for a robust social media campaign. We want a firm that has a good grasp of all of the tools that are out there. There are a lot of different free or, um, for minor fee platforms that we can use and bring into our website and bring into our public meetings, interactive polling that we can do from our cell phones, um, surveys that we can take on iPads and actually go out, um, survey people at bus stops, ride the buses, survey people on the buses, um, go to the farmer's market, a lot more mobility than we've seen in the past. And so that's one of the things that we'll be talking about. Um, it's one of the things we asked for in their proposals and it's one of the things that we'll talk to them about in these interviews here in the next week. It's a very important cur, component.
Will F-to-F be part of it too?
What's that?
Will F-to-F be part of it?
I don't know what that is.
Face-to-face?
Yes, there will be face-to-face.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Excellent, um, so the next meeting is November 15th, 5:45, Special Current CCPC Work Session, so. Put that on your calendars. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? There's a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
There you go. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, have a great night.